It's called to be in order, please join me in pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Minutes of the previous meeting.
Move the rule.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes, are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Bills, we have some additional bills on our desk and there's some in the highway portfolio that'll be split out into separate motions. It's gonna be that time of the year where you get some big bill about.
I'm moving to approve the bills.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the bills as presented, further discussion on that one. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oops, excuse me, roll call, I'm sorry, my fault.
Oh, that was always gonna start, it starts saying names all the way.
My fault, my fault.
Brown?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Decep? Aye. Light one?
Aye. Motion carries. Financial reports, got any, anything interesting?
Um, no, we have a letter of transfer, which is for the don't need agenda for the law enforcement side.
Everything else so far looks like it's running?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, questions, discussion, motion?
Moving to approve the financials as submitted.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the finances as presented, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Treasurer's checks.
Move the rule.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve treasurer's checks. Further discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the agenda, anything to add, any changes? Seeing none, take a motion to approve it.
So, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Very good. Extension is not here yet, but Roger is, he will go here, Roger. Morning.
Morning. Got a couple of estimates here for building for the bobcap. Them from Creole Bay Construction for 21, 825. And another from Township Builders for 28,000. Um, in neither of them, I don't have an electric, electrical bill yet, bid yet, but I've talked to them and, you know, they just haven't, and not as much as 1,000 to maybe.
Basically lights in a year?
Yep.
Both estimates for insulated yet?
Both estimates for light.
For insulating of the?
Yes, yes.
Is that concrete?
Yeah.
Where are we gonna set it at?
Right where the existing lawn shed is.
Okay. We're gonna take that one out or?
I'll take that one out. He said you have some sort of trailer to put that in.
Well, we're gonna, yeah.
Hey, Roger, do you think it's big enough?
I sure hope so, yeah, I think so. Um, like any, when you move from one house to the other, you do some house cleanings, and I need to do some house cleaning in our existing lawn shed, so, but yeah, I think it'll be big enough.
Will it, you know, fit the tractor and handle the attachments?
All the attachments, you know, um, the attachments are all like about four feet wide and 16 feet wide, so, you know, should have plenty of room, I, I can't foresee it not.
Yeah.
We just don't stick that most stuff in there.
Sure.
Basically, it would be the bobcap, the attachments, and then?
I'll have the lawnmower in there, we'll still have the snow blower, but I think they should be able easily fit on either side.
Sure.
So.
Four wheeler?
Four wheeler is gone, we won't need to use that anymore. I wonder if there's a place to put that.
Sounds like you got a four wheeler.
That belongs to the legal, yeah. So.
Okay.
You're comfortable with the one?
Yeah.
I don't see why we couldn't go with the lower bid.
But you get it done this summer still, the whole?
Yeah. This summer.
Okay.
Why make a motion to go to Creole Bay Construction then?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go with the little bit from Creole Bay Construction to put up the storage shed. Further discussion on that motion.
You got an end date on it, wondering if I have it done?
I did not, I just told them we got a, uh, the Creole Bay was the last one to get me an estimate, and I said we gotta be going on this because we got, you know, we ordered garage doors for our home back in January, they did show up in March, but they're telling us it'd be a five month wait for a garage door, so overhead. So I said we gotta get this done so we can get everything done this year.
We, we had an order dated longer than that?
No, nothing yet. Not until, once we get the estimate, so.
Okay.
Get the approval.
Okay.
Yeah, but certainly not on or being done this year.
Okay. Okay, seeing no other discussion, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Good evening.
Thanks, Roger.
Great. Something must've come up?
Yep.
Okay, well, we'll just move on down then. Uh, we can't do the expedition until 8:30, so Kevin?
All right, morning. Road updates, um, we've got all the federal aid county roads filled in now that were open cut. So that's done, we're stuck, we got the county line rolled up by hand, and then two other township bridge sites. So we got three little ones left. And we hope to have them done either this week or the first part of next week, so. As far as the big washouts. There's still, uh, I don't know, half dozen or a dozen township ones that are open that they're responsible for, but they have fixed a lot of theirs too, I would say way over half of them. Um, we're still hoping for a FEMA disaster, haven't heard anything definite, but just saying, oh, not definite, they thought it, they were, the state was collecting information until tomorrow. We have to have our preliminary estimates in tomorrow. So then after that, we'll try to have a better update of one one declaration.
So the big ones on four, nine, and 10, they all came together pretty well?
Yep, um, but not as many culverts as there was in any of them, but they used to back open again. It was hard to get culverts. So, and they, I, they have culverts in them.
Yeah.
Just not quite as many as before they went under, like, all three of them, they collapsed. So the one that collapsed actually is moving water, but of course, it's not moving as much water as it did one of those new type of thing now.
Did you get at least two culverts in each one?
Uh, the one on four has two, the one on 10 has two, but the one on nine only had one, and we put a, they had like a five foot arch in it, we put a three foot back in. So like I say, it's not quite as big, but we couldn't get a five foot arch either.
Smooth ones, you couldn't get them either, I told them.
Everybody wants them now.
Probably got smart enough.
Yeah. So those three big ones will be on the federal aid system. And typically, that takes another year to get that money, so the, likely, they're not gonna get permanent fixes until next summer. And just a heads up, that bond that we got 10, 12 years ago, whatever it was, that, that was the same type of federal disasters for, but we had a grade raise on four, a grade raise on two, a grade raise on three by, on Verbiel. So they were way, way, way bigger projects. So I, I know, we're still gonna be looking at 20% match on, on these three that we fixed this year, but it's not gonna get to the million dollars like it did, however long that bond was. So just so you have a heads up, we'll have to have some 20% match next year for those projects. It just won't be that many dollars a year.
Okay.
Any questions about the roads?
You said we still have, what'd you say, three spots?
Three.
That we still, all the ones that we're working on?
Yep. One's on the county road on the Cavanry line, and then the other two are township bridges, bridge states.
Okay.
And they're all relatively small compared to what we've already fixed, size wise.
Yep. Well, they're making progress then. Working, it's good.
Then, of course, we'll have to grab one. At least it'll be possible, but with it, but with the ground, we can't say there are rooms right on the street. All right, moving on. Last year, we had an insurance claim on one of the pen mortar grates. Well, that's a little confusing, there was two pen mortar graters, that's why the old one, and now April, we had a new one, but the one that we traded off was the one that had the damage done. And we turned it into insurance. So that was a $6,276 claim. And now we have a bill to Butler for $9,037.15. We got some cutting edges and other parts also along with that insurance claim, so we need a motion to pay that $9,000 bill.
Move the rule.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to pay $9,037.15 to Butler for the bill. Further discussion. Hearing none, roll call please.
Decep? Aye. Britt?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Light one?
Aye. Motion carries.
Well, some culverts we did get the new furnace in our main shop installed, and that bill was $2,525. And a motion to pay that. I'm gonna approve it.
All right. Okay, we have a motion and a second to pay culvert's roots for the furnace that was installed in the main shop, further discussion. Hearing none, roll call please.
Brown?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Decep? Aye. Light one?
Aye. Motion carries.
KLJ's invoices for the work that they did on the tin lift overlay project on three. That was most of the bill, and a little bit of work that they did on the bridge replacement on four. So the total of those two bills is $9,038.19.
Move the rule.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to pay KLJ's bill. Further discussion. Hearing none, roll call please.
Britt?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Decep? Aye. Light one?
Aye. Motion carries.
And a while back, we ordered some sign posts from Newman Signs, and also I had to get some more road closed signs. Uh, the road closed signs, we can get reimbursed if there's a FEMA disaster from them. So the bill on those two were $3,063.10.
Is that the one?
That's, that's the one that.
Okay.
On your bill list, Kevin?
Uh.
Do you have a Newman Signs for $8,063.10? And then on your report, it's $3,063.10, so I'm just wondering if that's? A typo? Maybe if the number was?
A three or an eight?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good catch, I didn't catch that.
That was a big catch. I'm gonna guess the Brent's right on this, I made a mistake. So it'll be the $8,000.
The $8,063.10?
Is it in, it's in?
It's in my way.
I have the motor under moving, yeah.
Excuse me.
I got some flaring you need.
Yeah, I threw in a few others in there too, so.
I think those posts were on $7,000 or something.
That seems to be more, yeah.
Yeah, it.
$8,000, $8,063.10.
That's my bad. Move to approve the Newman Signs for $8,063.10.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve $8,063.10 to pay Newman Signs, further discussion.
Thanks for that.
Thank you, catch you. Hearing no further discussion, roll call please.
Brown?
Aye.
Decep? Aye. Britt?
Aye.
Light one?
Aye.
Okay, the next one, we got the parts for our sand spreader from Hell House Equipment. And that was $3,012.47.
Move the rule.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to pay for the sand spreader parts. Further discussion. Hearing none, roll call please.
Decep? Aye. Britt?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Light one?
Aye. Motion carries.
True North Steel, the big one, our culverts, um, we did get that order for the inventory, which was over 106,000, and then we had to order some more 36 and a 42 inch culvert that failed on a township road. So the bill for True North Steel for this month is $135,286.88.
I'll make a motion to pay.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to pay True North Steel, $135,286.88. Sure, those guys are just crazy busy, my goodness. They're running culverts off the door like you can't believe, I'm sure.
A lot of those are resales, you know, so that comes back into the.
But still, that's just us, I mean, that's the whole state's like that, everyone's buying culverts, so, man away. Okay, uh, any further discussion on the motion?
Maybe after last year.
Yeah. Okay, no further discussion, roll call please.
Brown?
Aye.
Decep? Aye. Britt?
Aye.
Light one?
Aye. Motion carries.
And we're at the point where we needed to order cutting edges for the rest of the summer. I got an estimate from Butler, they'll cost $10,261.22. I have a $20,000 line item for that.
Okay.
We have a motion to order them.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second just to order them, we're not paying for them, that's just an estimate of what we think it's gonna cost, we just wanna order them, we're gonna pay them. Okay, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries.
And we have two months worth of bills for the bridge inspections that were done in the last two months. Well, I guess we were a month behind, so anyways, but there were two months with the bills there. And along with that, when we sent that in, there's a certification form stating where we get the local money from. What you require is a signature from the chairman and the auditor, so looking for a motion for the chairman and the auditor to sign those forms.
Code.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the chairman and the auditor to sign the bridge certification forms. How many bridges did we have looked at this year?
Uh, this year? Probably 20, and this is five of them.
Okay, further discussion on the motion. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries.
And one last thing that I have is, uh, mag water again this year. Like in the past, we've always paid for 75% of the mag water, it goes on county roads. And 25% for the local homeowners. And just wanna know if we wanna do it that same way again this year. 75, 25 split.
It seems we've been working in the past, it was fine.
Yeah, the, the homeowners are happy with that, more than willing to pay that 25% too.
Okay, so.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue with the 75, 25 split on mag water that we've used in the past on county roads. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries.
And then one thing that, uh, how could be everybody, we, we had the preliminary meeting for the construction on paving job in Hammond. And that's, the, the paving was scheduled to start after the 4th of July. I think they have a June, June 16 celebration up there, but we're trying to avoid that, not that, I mean, if the weather gets ready, we can work around the celebration, but they're aware of the celebration up there, so. And then there's some concrete work that'll get done before that 4th of July, so just an update on what's going on there.
Okay. Good deal. Over that resume. Okay, any further questions for Kevin?
I just want on the railroad at Doyen.
Yeah, it is scheduled for, at Doyen?
In Doye.
Oh, yeah, uh, that's been rough for a while, and when they, when the railroad raised that, they never let us know, so we don't have the chance to extend the asphalt, it raised it just, they put one of those new.
Just right out of the tracks.
Yeah, so they raised it just enough where it's really rough, but we go on a speed limit.
What can we do?
We could put overlays on both sides, so probably when we get ready to do overlays this year, we'll, we'll do that.
Thinking in and out this year.
Yeah, hope to, you know how Strata Gold, they, they promised, I watched the video, but they promised and promised, and now we're in, but, but we try.
Okay.
Okay, can we add, add that to the list then?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is definitely rough there for, for the sex that did the great, great boys. Take the truck.
With the Verbiel, I was thinking of Verbiel when you said that, it's getting, Southam is getting the new gates, and I haven't heard anything on that project yet.
Are you gonna gate this year?
Yep. Gates and the, and, uh, signals, you bet signals.
Can they get a little monkey with the track though, will they?
Hmm, not at that one.
That'll be that one.
That's a good question, I'll have to ask, typically, they don't, but.
Right, yeah, I don't. It's GBR, I can really find one of them.
All right, it's smooth.
Yeah.
You can play over that one. Actually, I actually ran into it, I didn't run into, but I got stopped by a train at Verbo for the first time in, oh god, a long time. The other day.
It's been a long time since I've, I know they, I know they use the tracks, but very seldom do I get stopped by a train there.
That one has the lights and gates.
And the lights and the gates were working, so I can report, that's a good thing. Okay, further questions for Kevin?
Thank you.
Okay, hearing good, yeah, thank you. We have five minutes, can you, can you get, five minutes enough for extension? Yeah.
Oh, I need two.
Oh, okay, well then.
I wanna apologize, something came up last minute for Sarah, so I totally am prepared. Um, we've been really busy with 4H, last week we took 18 kids to Plus One Benson County youth to Bis Mart for three days for a leadership conference. We have amazing kids in Ramsey County, they were very well behaved. Out of the 40 kids at the state conference, we have 18, so I'm very pleased with our participation from Ramsey County. Um, Lindsay is learning what it's like to be an A agent in the summer, and is full up to her ears with, um, questions, and people coming in to meet her, and radio calling, wondering what the planting status is, and she happened to come in a year that off a drought and into wet season, so she's, she's just learning a lot. Um, this week, we're into 4H mini camps, that's where Lindsay is, she's in a crop strategy mini camp, we had a soy mini camp yesterday, mini camps all week, the end of this week, we are hosting district communication arts. And we are full into planning for achievement days, so we have a lot going on. Anyone have any questions on what? I don't know what Sarah usually says, I, I'm sorry.
You did well.
But it is the fair.
Um, our horse show is June 25th on a Saturday. The livestock show is June 29th on a Wednesday. And then we're having our statics up at the memorial building July 14th and 15th. And then our statics will be, um, our blue ribbons, straight from there, will go into a trailer that, um, 4H was recently able to purchase with some grant funding. And, um, we're using it for some of our mini camps, um, it'll transport our, um, items to state fair, this year we'll be able to take everything, not just the smaller items, cause many times we just were able to take a suburban or whatever, so now we can take bigger items, whatever, um, up to the state fair too, so.
You got all that, right?
We got it.
Great.
Yeah. State fair is 20.
State fair starts that last Friday in.
Last Friday of July, right?
July, yep, or, um, not the last Friday, July.
I don't know, I got the booklet, I just can't, I, I look.
Yeah, it starts 22nd. 22nd of July, goes through the 30th. So it will be here before we know it.
You get the 4H booklet, you, all the things that are going on behind the scenes that you don't even recognize, and everyone's all riding the carnival rides, there's all kinds of stuff going on. My goodness.
Lots of good news.
Yeah, it's a good deal.
So, thank you.
Okay, any questions for Cindy? Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
All right, we gotta wait two minutes. Do we have to go right at 8:30, cause it's announced as 8:30, correct, in case somebody wants to be here to?
Yeah.
Talk about their evaluation. Okay, well, let's knock some of the other stuff out, since we have two minutes that we have. Homestead credits.
Move the rule.
Homestead credit.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the homestead credits, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Raffle permits.
Move the rule.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the raffle permits. Further discussion on that motion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Letter of transfer for dollars for the law enforcement center, blue credits, that's a good one.
I'll take a motion to.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second for the letter of transfer for, further discussion on that one. Is that the second time we've had the transfer this year already, correct?
Nope.
Or was it the first time?
First time?
First. Have a good one already. Oh, this is double check. We're not, this isn't gonna be the last one, it's like, I'm telling you.
That's just to, uh, that's just to put that being, get zero.
What else can we do, can we start over?
Oh, this is just zeroing us out, and then we're gonna run the bill up again.
Yeah.
So in other words, what you're telling us is 4:44 and 6:30 something, so we're over, like, all there, what you're telling us. Okay, further discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, close same sign. Motion carries. Um, standing committees of the County Commissioners Association, let's, we'll skip that one, just so we can discuss it, uh, special permit.
I'll make a motion to.
Okay. We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this special permit, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we're, we're getting pretty close to 8:30, let me pull up my, this, so I got all this stuff, figuring out this. Let's go back up to the top here. My phone will work. Okay. I'll wait until the clock comes around to make sure it's technically 8:30. Start it up. Are we gonna have anybody from the city here?
Mark is here, well.
Or Mark's, Mark's out there.
Uh, he's here, but he's not going to come in, he just had a recent COVID exposure.
Okay.
So, um.
Well, we appreciate it, you keep it up.
So if something needed, I'll, I'll, I'll holler.
He can, he can holler and answer.
But otherwise, um, he thought we'd just. But otherwise, um, he thought we'd just, we'd have to ask, and say, oh, pronunciation coming up, other meetings, yeah.
Okay, seeing as it is eight-thirty, um, I would accept a mo, or entertain a motion from the board to adjourn as the board of county commissioners and convene as the board of tax equalization. So, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries, we are now in session as the Board of Tax Equalization for Ramsey County, and I will turn it over to Brett.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Typically, let's say, so we, the city of Devil's Lake report that you have in your packet, I believe. I don't have a lot of information on that for you, but Mark is here, if there was something in particular, as you had looked through it, to check questions on, but I think the main thing that I notice is just kind of to report that on their residential property, sales ratio of the project came in at around ninety percent. And they made a market adjustment of approximately three percent for the city of Devil's Lake. They, it appears that they were in tolerance for their commercial property, and they did not give up overall market adjustment required. As you flip through their pages, you can see where they have some of their changes that they had to do, whether it be new construction or just reassessment on certain properties that they needed a different type of adjustment than opposed to their. And that is where my city knowledge kind of slows down, obviously, they have in their, their exempt property information, their homestead credit, that I think, just their bond exemptions, just as an informational part for you. If you don't have any questions, if, we would just, um, need a motion to approve the assessments as presented, they've already had their city meeting and had this approved by their city commissioners.
Okay.
We'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, in a second, okay. So we have a motion in a second to approve the city of Devil's Lake assessments, homestead, MBA credits, the whole packet, okay? We don't have anybody here that wants to speak to specifically, one of you listening? And technically, uh, re- refresh my memory on this, if they would have had to speak at the tax assessment meeting for the city of Devil's Lake previous to speaking at this one, if they had a concern, correct? No different than the townships?
They, it's similar, but they could still come here.
Okay.
They just wouldn't be able to come onto the state, you have to follow.
Okay, yeah, that's, yeah, we always, I was forgetting exactly how that function works, so, okay, very good, thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second on the table, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries.
And the next is a motion to approve values of townships contracted for the county, to the county for assessing. So that would be, um, the assessing that we do in our office. On your page two, and of our packet, two, three, four, five, two, three, four. Those are all of the changes that would have been done, that were over a ten percent or three thousand dollars in change. Uh, so a lot of that is new construction, maybe you see some of the ones that have taken on, I did put on some of the larger ones that we have removed. Those would maybe be either we've had a few fires this past year, or, um, farm residents have become exempt, that type of thing. Uh, change of class, a lot of times is where it's been a developed subdivision, and the developer's still in ag land, but then it's sold to somebody, so now it's moved into a big F status, it meets a criteria for that. Those are all on there, otherwise, um, there was a lot of residential, uh, value change this year. The sales were extremely strong in the last year, we'll see how that continues to go. One of the differences that we found this year versus other years were our higher value homes sold, more of them. Typically, we haven't seen a lot of those sell, so it was hard to really get a good grasp on where they were sitting in the sales ratio, we had an idea, but so a lot of the upper valued homes did see a larger increase in value this past year, along with other homes too. So there was probably around twenty-five in residential revaluation, just reassessment this past year, which is more than spent in the last few years. So that, that was a big change for us, commercial came in in tolerance, not a lot changed. There's a little bit of increase based on just some different things, smaller garages and that, but weren't part of our thing that have been reassessed, but um, they were in tolerance, so, um, not a new big change is there. And, um, trying to think of what else, that is, the, the, the main, the main changes were within residential this past year.
So we, for clarity's sake, then, on the residential changes, we've been, you've been taking it on on a case-by-case basis, basically, instead of deciding to make a
Right.
change across the county, because we know that it's essentially the homes next to the lake and things like that, that are probably increasing the valuation and getting the sales ratio out of whack.
A lot of times. Yeah, a lot of it is supposed kind of in a subdivision, or we call it an area, you know, or so, then just a township or.
Okay. Okay.
Make motion to approve values of townships contracted with the county for assessing.
Okay.
No second.
We have a motion in a second, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor vote by saying aye.
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 Post same sign. Motion carries, there's no townships that provide their own assessor.
Yeah, we do still have Darryl James at hand, Mike, he's here, working on some of the townships and cities. And they both actually did do quite a, quite a bit of work this year, they, they too saw some residential changes, there were a lot of sales in dark weather, and even Hampden had some sales and that, so they were able to use those and make some changes. If they had anything that was over the ten percent or the three thousand dollars, I just included it on the pages within ours, so they would be there for you to view. Neither of them are here today, which, um, they did, it didn't sound like they had anything at their township meetings that was of concern, so they didn't need to come in today.
Okay. Let's take a motion for that then.
Hold on.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve values of the townships that provide their own assessor, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Inundated land.
Page, on page five of the packet I presented, are the people that applied for inundated land reduction again this year. That's actually more of a state brand program that we do, nothing unusual, nothing new, same, I mean, there might even be a few less than past years that applied, you know, this is done by March thirty-first, so it might change from the following year, but that, once again, too, just as an informational thing, our twos committee didn't do it this April, because they didn't have any complaints as of April, once again, maybe we'll see some changes going into the next year.
Okay.
We do have an open slot right now on the twos committee, it would be for the district that's in the area of, um, like Church's Ferry, Dry Lake, that area, I did reach out to an area owner there, they weren't interested, but told me to contact Dan Webster, and I've done really briefly on that at one time, and so I can kind of follow up with him, because he would know somebody in his area, some son of a laws of farm and different things to build that. Shouldn't be a problem, just wasn't needed immediately, because they weren't meeting yet.
That's, it's a once-a-year job, so it's not.
Right, no, unless something really crazy happened, but.
Hope that doesn't happen.
Right.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the inundated land list.
Hold on.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the inundated land list, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Agricultural values.
Page six is the report that we received from the state each year, and it shows, um, in twenty point one, our, we were, our average was six sixty-four point eight one. They were coming in for all of our agricultural, and we're on seven oh four, we just have a ten percent tolerance, as usual, so we're about ninety-four percent. I put down for a one percent agricultural change, just to keep us at the ninety-five, which we usually try to stay at. Obviously, that would be up to you, if you wanted to do that or not, but it's just to keep, we typically try to keep commercial, residential, and agricultural around ninety-five percent.
We'll make a motion to one percent.
So.
Okay, we have a motion.
And we're in that tolerance, we're good.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to increase agricultural land valuation in the county by one percent, to stay at the ninety-five percent, what's that, put us at a value at per acre, that number?
Like, roughly six seventy-one, if you sound, oh, right.
Six seventy-one. Okay. Roughly, okay. Okay. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. And lastly.
And lastly, really, I just have a few pages of, that shows our veterans exemption, our property exemptions, our homestead credit that we offer, or that are offered, and once again, just to always remind you that the veterans credit, disabled veterans credit, or the homestead credit are especially great credits for people to come in for, the state pays it back to the, to the county, so no one loses anything. It's available for people, we love helping them, Chris, he does a really good job helping people, so if anyone ever ever has any questions, I should stop in and inquire about those.
Okay, do we have to approve those separately, we approve them all separately as they come in, and then they just, they're just standing, correct?
Yeah.
As long as people keep their.
It's just an informational.
Okay. That's what I thought, okay, very good. Any further things?
Just one thing, do we advertise them?
We usually with the city advertise something right before it's due, in the beginning of the, like in February, January, that time. But, and the state does some advertising, other than that, not, not a ton. It's in the newspaper that we've done.
And we do try to catch them in the treasurer's office a little bit, and then send them your way, or send them to the city, or, you know, we see they're struggling, we do.
That's a good idea, of putting it in the state.
It is, exactly.
Yeah.
We usually catch them when they're three years.
Yeah.
You know, before closure.
Oh.
When they're dropped, got gone.
Well, you'd like, you'd like to hopefully catch them before, you know, we can tell people about it.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Well, I'll try, I'll make mention of it on the radio. Maybe that'll, at least get people, get people's minds on it.
These are, maybe put in the mail, advertise a little bit, or they said, oh, built for.
I guess we could do something when we do the tax slips.
Just something.
Yeah.
Explain it a little bit, or desert somehow, but.
Yeah, just, do you qualify for this kind of thing? Maybe you'll catch people's eye, something.
It's a little paperwork. A lot, you know, they're getting the insurance by the state, all the better. Yeah, we could do something like that, or chill them.
And the deadline on those is?
Well, technically, February first, but we do have the ability to do abatements in that if there is.
Yeah, we always doing that, but.
Yeah. Yeah.
But if we can send something home, when we do the August preliminaries or something, to give people some light on it, so.
Could do that.
Mm-hmm.
That way they have their mind on it before they just come to action. Oh, something to think of, something to work on.
Could you maybe get us a little, yeah, did you work on that, give us a little insert that we could do for August?
I know the state does have some different things too, that they provide also.
If it was just something that could fit in the back of the, and then go from there.
Your plate. It feels like a brochure, but smaller, like the side of right on. It would be.
We'll do that in August, when we send our estimates.
That'd be awesome.
At that, yeah.
Okay, very good, any further questions or discussion for Brett?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brett, appreciate it.
Thank you, have a good day.
You too. Okay, from there then, I guess we need to have a motion to adjourn as the board of tax equalization reconvene as the board of county commissioners.
Hold on.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to do so, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries, and we are reconvene as the board of county commissioners, all right, back into our regular agenda. I think the only thing we have left on here, not the only thing, but under new business, standing committees of the North Dakota County Commissioners Association. In the past, we've had some of our commissioners serve on the standing committees, there's a list of the standing committees in the letter that was sent to us. Appears as though there's the audits, nominating resolutions, and legislative. Commissioner Frith served on the legislative committee last session. And I've served on it once too, it's really worthwhile. Anybody interested in serving on any of these, I'll put your name forward.
Steve White was interested.
Yeah.
Um, no later than July.
Well, we got some time then.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
Yeah.
It's in our packets, think about it, and then we can talk about it at the next meeting, too. Leave it on this, just a whole business item, and we can give them an option too, if people's interested. Okay, anything else on that topic?
I think that legislative one's incredibly interesting, and I'd be willing to do it again.
Okay.
Lot, lot of information comes, comes down that text, guys. They're a great, great group, sitting on ideas off.
Well, I think you know, especially from the legislative standpoint, we're gonna legislate, we're coming up. So it's going to be busy, and we need, we're gonna have to really be in the room to push stuff, like if we want to do something with jail bills and things of that nature, we're we're gonna have to put suppression on them, so we're gonna need help from the other county commissioners, even if they don't have necessarily as much of a problem as we have, to explain to them what the issue is with us. Any, any way we can exert some influence would be a good thing, so.
I know the other three counties that, you know, have signed a lot of works, they're kind of boring, but they're all very concerned about their bills, too, very concerned with variable escalations and the cost of incarceration, which is crazy.
That's just insane. I think the other thing, cost of incarceration is one of them too, but the other thing we're gonna have to watch, and I don't know if they've come out with the final assessment yet, but on the Andy Purse retirement, that they're looking at, what they're gonna do with defined benefit versus defined contribution, and what kind of what kind of ramifications that's gonna have for local governments that have been participating in that program. So we're gonna have to exert some influence there too, possibly, depending on what comes out of that interim committee, so. It'll be, it's gonna be a very legislative session's always very busy, has a lot of big issues, but it's gonna be, especially so for some county governance, I think, in this next one, because especially that Andy Purse, if they decide to try to do something, that's gonna be a, there's a huge dollar figure along with that, so. Kind of interesting.
Yeah, the town of North Dakota, rural handling service.
Yeah.
I like, gonna be a big push for that, you know.
And we'll have to, that'll throw the whole state for that, you know, if you somehow. Okay, they're left the area, just because they're thirty, forty miles from a hospital, you know, we need aggressive, somehow, and.
I'm on the ABC, excuse me, I'm on the ABC committee for the Rural Relations Association, so we are working on it.
Good.
So we will have to work on legislation.
Well, and I think if you look at the census numbers and the demographic change, I mean, I think it's pretty, well, it's happened since nineteen thirty in North Dakota, but it's just escalating that the rural areas are becoming more rural, and the urban areas or larger population centers are gaining more population, and it's just gonna continue to do that at some point, so we're gonna have to, we really have to continue to push and say, hey, we're pretty important out here, too. We can't be left behind, so.
I've been sitting on that interim legislative committee for water drainage. And some of the, the discussion in that was creating more conibility within your water resource districts, answered and pulled to county commissioners, elected officials. And one of the push was, either have a county commissioner sit on that water resource district, or have water resource district members elected. Neither of which, I thought, were really good ideas. And, you know, we, we have an appointment to those individuals because of their knowledge and expertise in, in water management, and and I don't know if that's anything that any of our commissioners want, I don't want to dive into. But, and there was, there was a lot of case study on why a county can't, commissioner cannot also be a water resource district member.
Why, yeah, you'd have to have sensory coaching, there was some, things of that nature, so.
A lot of cognitive interest was identified, and so.
Well, at the end of the day, I mean, they're appointed, every member of that water resource district board is appointed by the county commission, so essentially, they serve at the, at the pleasure of the county commission, so we can exert influence at any point in time, by just saying, hey.
Because I sat on the commission, I tapped the two games that came in, they're probably beyond a lot of these.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's not a, it's not a lucrative job, and it's a tough job.
They have to go where you can water, or, or reach people. But I think they're, I think they may be. But I think they're happy, I think they're maybe fortunate to have people that are interested in, and kind of set up their own kind of district now, on the old situation. Probably the law quarters of the county. But there are issues in every quarter of the county, so.
Well, that, like you said, electing it, that doesn't make sense, you know, because, I mean, how many people in the county understand what the Water Resource District Board does, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, probably not enough, unfortunately.
You know, we think about probably how fast the water came this year, but I guess it was, you know, there's lots of mull and oyster to add.
Right.
And the colors are getting better, we're dealing with all the violence, and it's moving water a lot faster.
Yes, it is.
I know the state highway, it's figured out all that highway twenty there, you know, and it's fact that how much water came over that road, it was amazing.
Yeah.
You know, that, just couldn't get out of your ass.
I was doggone like over there, so.
Should never see, how to get it, our bike, right?
Hopefully. Okay, not the divergent from the top a little bit, that's okay, that's okay. We're basically in the conversational portion of the, anyways, so. All right, from there, we'll keep that on as the next meeting. Visitors and delegations, Sean's here.
Yeah, just a couple minutes, we're excited.
Yeah.
Not asking for money.
Impressive with that.
We had some good training than we had last week, I was gonna pass this on real quick. And this is not information that just basically will show you how much some of this stuff costs. And I think you guys have some information that I think you have to. I got up everybody today. So the last week, we had, you was downstate university came up here with homeland security. This was a great program for active shooters. I don't know if they have any questions for you guys about, what are we doing in our community for, if there's ever a school shooting? You can tell them we've been training. We actually did set up a rescue task force a couple of years ago. We have finished the training yet, and we're just starting to enter the operational phases of this. We had to do the protocols, we read a few things. Actually, was able to hear funds for our firemen and for EMS for body armor. It's about a thousand dollars a piece, so we finally have all the body armor. What is entitled, what LSU came up, has taught us how if there is an active shooting, have us prevent this area. Instead of us sitting back waiting, we're gonna be going in with the police officers and giving to the victims as quickly as possible. So our fire and EMS are gonna be going into a warm zone, basically. We won't be armed, but we'll have police officers, they'll be escorting us, and they'll be armed. Our sole purpose is to rescue as many people as possible. So we have, we have these things already, I've got the body armor, I have a couple bags set up already. But those, just to show you how much it costs for us, and we'll be trying to get some more funds for it, so we can fill the bags up. There's a couple things that we were missing, and we found out from this training. We have this training every couple of years, so, best part about this training is that it didn't cost us a penny. So they found everybody up, we had any instructors come up. Just so you are aware, our deputies did a fantastic job at this. Our RNC manager was also there, and go through the whole process. They actually put him in as in command for one first time, and he did a outstanding job with that. They actually tried to stop us with the first ones, but they put me and our manager, Chris Jaeger, on as a commander, and it didn't stop us, so. We did fairly well, they were actually kind of impressed with that. Also kind of impressed that we already have for such a small community, that we already have this going on. We were the first in the state to do it a couple of years ago, now I'm working closely with Wilson to basically finish the program too, so. We're one of the first people in North Dakota that actually runs this admin in the Midwest. So we do have an active plan, we work closely with law enforcement for any kind of active threat, not just active shooters, so. Your community does have this in the action, I'm gonna try to get as many funds as I can, but it does take a pretty penny. Example, one turn it will almost three hundred fifty-four dollars. That's for a specific type of turn, it's hard for me to justify having that on hand when it's on the top, because you don't use it that often, so. I'll be looking for funds, so I'll be trying to get us with some grants to get us fully equipped. At this time, we're close enough. I've got enough equipment, then we can respond, but I need some other equipment, so. We're working on that, any questions about, we're a great program, we're always really happy with it, so.
Keep us informed.
Will do.
So Sean, do you ever branch out to Lake Region Community Fund?
Lake Region Community Fund was the people that gave us all the body armor.
Oh, perfect, perfect.
So we've worked with them for the past couple of years, and we can give.
Cause I did sit on that board for a while, and search and rescue was on there for like a ten dollars.
Yeah, we were, we were pretty fortunate with us, we got all the funding for the body armor.
Okay, good. Good.
Any other questions? Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, any other visitors and delegations, you still want to have it in for us?
Got nothing for you yet.
Nothing yet, nothing yet, that's okay. Portfolios, Commissioner Frith.
Steve was able to create in a couple vehicles when he got his new vehicles, so a little lower cost on that. Which was, which was good, something that we don't have to deal with now is just trying to get rid of those at a surplus. The units, and we got a pretty fair price, we thought, on how, how many miles those vehicles had on them, so. Extension, you heard from Cindy, they were gone for most last week with taking kids on leadership training, and then Lindsay had a, was doing her training down in Fargo, so. Their office was closed for a few days last week, but hopefully everybody got notified that needed to. Any airport, we continue to move forward on the expansion of, of facilities out there using the ARPA dollars that was given to airports. And I think they have, their next meeting is next Monday. Let's see, I think the LEC, and Ed can probably hit on this, but I cannot be at the next couple LEC meetings, I have conflicts. So I'm wondering if that's something that the county, if it would benefit us as a commission to designate the alternate to sit in on those meetings for voting purposes and voting rights. I know there's a couple big meetings that the LEC will have coming up discussing their twenty twenty-three budget.
Yeah. I had a little discussion in July from the university.
And unfortunately, I have our water tour next week, and then in July, we have to reschedule a joint board meeting because of our summer water conference, so.
I think we'll approach, I say may or not, but if he's not here, but hey, I think you said it all.
So if we, if we could do that as a commission, give a voting rate to an ultimate, you know, and and I think each of us as commissioners probably have some committees or boards that we're appointed to that sometimes life happens and we're unable to attend. It's always good to have a county representative there, so.
The legal, the legal, we probably do that.
I think it seems on the up and up, but to make a final call, I'd have to see your board rules or governance, or whatever you have in place.
No, there would be a problem with technology.
That's what I'm sure.
Approach, blame, ask.
When is the, so you're gonna miss next week's meeting at the?
Yeah, it's June fifteenth, and then July the third, Wednesday in July is what, the twentieth, I think.
Are, are you already starting to tie the budget next week?
Yeah.
We started last month.
We started last month, and Rob's been chirping in his pencil, I hope, and trying to get those, those numbers. They're great.
It'd be a shocker, I know that, it's already a shocker.
In other words, it's, it's not, it's not looking great, is what you're telling us.
Yeah, it's.
It, it, it's crazy big numbers, and, and I think, and that's, that's why I think it's important to have an additional Ramsey county representative present at those meetings, and have a voting authority on that, so.
Good idea. Just to chart in on yours, on the jail, is that at our last meeting, we could tell everybody that we're grants, that we're captain and head, it's only been on for a couple of weeks at that point. Really were comfortable with that guy, who's been there, did a good job, and felt for them. The rest of the counties and the city were, and, you know, looking at it real positive, I thought, so.
Hey, and one of the things that we're gonna have to, you know, continue with our legislators, operatives, is cross-licensing. You know, accepting people that are licensed in another state to come in and be able to carry on without having to go through CO basic through the state of North Dakota, because our captain and lieutenant have twenty-five years e- each in correctional facilities in Arizona. But they have to go through the CO basic for North Dakota in order to be, right, so. You know, and I think they, they see that in a lot of different professions, not just law enforcement or corrections staff, that they're been licensed in another state, and they, if we wanna attract them into North Dakota, they have to go through a bunch of different additional training that they've already received in that state that they're coming from.
Last photo was brought up, I had Flanders over there, and Steve Law, and you just, you know, it's not our call.
No, it's.
Yeah, it's come from the top, so, we're going about it the right way, adjusting the legislators.
I, I, I think so.
You know, get a chain, you're good, you know, and you're very well qualified, you know, these two people. And they've had some responses with new hires used to do.
So, we have a great, great place to live, it's just a matter of accepting those professional credentials from other states.
Well, yeah, if you can show that you've done basic stuff, the basic education that's comparable, plus continuing education, I don't know why you would. But, yeah, like you said, it's, it's not, that's not the only profession that it's an issue, but it's so many different professions that people can't come here from other states, because we have really closed licensing set up, so we need to open those up more than we can.
So.
Okay?
That's all I have.
Okay. Do we wanna do anything with an action on that, just because you don't, you won't be able to make that meeting next week, even if Blaine isn't here, or we can have the?
He's gone for two weeks.
So he's not gonna be here next week, in other words, okay?
Blaine isn't here?
He's gone for his.
He's a.
Two weeks.
Two-week guard, so.
Yeah.
July, when we definitely, you wanna come, Lisa?
What is that, July what?
Twenty.
This, be next Wednesday, right?
Then next Wednesday is the fifteenth of June, and then July twenty is the next.
Okay, next Wednesday I can, July twentieth I could.
I know in July, you should have two people there, but that's when they're gonna have that photo.
Right, so.
Think one of you two could give me a copy of your board rules or governing documents?
Give Rob a call or, or whatever, manager.
Okay, we can do that.
Look, if we need somebody else there next week, I can go.
You go, go ahead.
Do we, do we, should we make a motion basically that I consider as an alternate for next week? Under the assumption that the board rules allow so?
That's fine.
Yeah, I think that would take care of it.
I'll make that. I'll second that.
A motion in a second, and that obviously is an alternate, assuming that the rules allow you to do so.
Fifteen's automatic, cut off on, are we, we're done?
If I'm not done by Saturday, I'm calling, I'm calling.
You're calling today?
I'm getting to that.
You picked your day already.
I'm getting to that point. I, I spent hours yesterday digging gauge wheels out on the air seater, so yes, I'm getting to that point. It's only about the fourteen times this spring.
Call it operator, do that, do all the things.
Okay, further discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all in fair, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries, okay, anything else, Jeff?
Nope.
Okay, we'll just pivot to Ed, since he was already talking about LEC.
Yeah, I was, remember you were in there, I know the budget's a choker, I don't know what else, what else you can do, but trying to make some cuts, that's for sure. We're gonna have to, try to look under sources of revenue, I mean, we're gonna try to stay after the state, and get some help there, I mean, we just set a fifty, you know, right now, we're full all the time, over, I don't know if that, they always can't farm it out right now, but I know their warrants that aren't getting issued, are not getting served, I mean, so, but I think, I think they're going a lot better, I really feel a lot more comfortable, a lot of the new help we have out there, and they've gotten some applicants of, you know, personal, people just starting out in the jails, so, it's worth seeing. I just keep working with it, I guess, all I can say, so. Senior real, they're very appreciative of the money we send for the dishwashing, like the new flooring, they're on them. Get put into suburbs, so they're very, very appreciative of the help there, so. And the jail. And the other county in the states face the same thing with large jails.
That was gonna kind of be my question, so what kind of, what kind of help and assistance is the state giving us currently, other than coming in and just doing the assessments to see where we should be at prisoner-wise?
Financially, very.
I mean, because to me, doesn't, shouldn't the state have some skin in the game, simply because if, say for instance, our facility can't run anymore because of financials or whatever that would be, they're gonna lose all those jail spots, then where do those prisoners go? I mean, we're already tied for spots across the state. So it seems to me they should have the foresight to say, you know what, let's help these local facilities with additional training and all the things that are necessary to keep them functional and, and, and running with, you know, where we want them to be running.
I, I just can't see why it wouldn't be an easy sound to legislate.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it makes, it makes.
That's what you just said, yeah.
Makes the best sense in the world, in my opinion, I guess.
We need help, we need help.
I'm not saying that, yeah, I guess.
You know, very appreciative of them taking over the social service funding, I mean, very appreciative. I don't know what taxes we're getting in the county, we haven't gotten that done, and these are those.
But man.
And we do, but, I mean, we need to get some help with this jail, you know. Yellow Lake's a hub, you know, Pismar's a hub, Farthing's a hub, Grand Fork's a hub, Minot. All the big towns are hubs that are drawing people. And where people get, then they have crime, I mean, it's just.
Yeah, it's a gamble of virginal.
You know, let's, let's try to address it, and I guess the spring we add, and we're trying to get legislators entered, you know, and upriver to the budgets, so. I think we really need to address it, and we charge somewhat.
Yeah, start putting some numbers together, figure out what it's gonna cost us, maybe get the association on our side, and maybe they can help us with some staff, and try to get something figured out, so we can go in full work when it's time to go.
You try to cut the wages at the jail, and imagine what you're gonna get for responding to higher rates.
Well, and that's, that's, that's the thing, we're all under that pressure right now, in terms of to get good quality help, and have to start at a especially when it's a difficult job, you have to start at a higher number, you just have to.
You're looking at eight percent inflation rate.
Yeah, buying power is just.
I don't know.
It's crazy. Okay, anything else?
All good.
Lisa.
Okay, I went to the Lake Region Heritage Center, we had a committee meeting, and they have an art fest coming up July eighth and ninth. They have a puzzle competition, June fifteenth, they're only taking so many teams. It's a team of four, and you get so many hours to complete the same puzzle. Just something fun up there. They're looking at redoing the front of their steps, they have some roof repair, that's kind of all in the making right now. So that, that's it for them, that's all they have, we got another one coming up next Monday. And then I do have Dakota Prairie Community Action, they have a meeting coming up July twelfth on Tuesday. Candy and I are gonna be in Dickinson for convention, so I don't know if anybody can help me out, or how that works, or.
Well, we got another meeting.
There we go.
Okay, I, I'm just gonna bring you down.
Couple more to do.
Everyone check your calendars.
I know.
I know I'm gonna be on that day.
And I think, what are they tapped out? They do this quarterly, I think.
Yes, and that's the thing with those quarterly meetings, it's not like a monthly, if you are a bi-monthly, if you miss one, it's not the end of the world, cause in only two weeks or four weeks out, when it's a quarterly, one, they're really, they won't be there.
Cause the every center has, that's monthly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna get to report to the Treasury's office, I guess, to Blaine and, we, you know, slower in the summer, Jackie helping Candy put some election stuff, we sent out some to represent local bills, hopefully we can get some of them, and probably preparing for August, I mean, it's, it's gonna be here before we know it for an estimate. Everything's going okay?
Okay, very good. Speaking of, before I hop in, I might, when, when would we like to start talking about putting our budgets together? And giving some guidance to our department heads on where we're going with wages and everything else?
I would think after election, maybe on the time that.
Talk about it on the twenty-first, okay?
Yes, please.
Okay, that's why we'll do that.
Or if we, yeah.
Yeah, we can talk about a second meeting in June with the, cause we have to have initial finalized by the tenth of August, correct?
We usually do it the first meeting in August.
So, we can.
First of August?
Yeah, first meeting of August.
August is second.
Second. Would be the intent, so, yeah, if we can make a decision on, our next meeting, we'll have a discussion on that, on where we'd like to have the department heads go with, with the recommendations on their budgets, and then we'll, we'll look at probably that second, third week, or third week and fourth week of July to put the, well, that second meeting in July, we can probably come in early and knock some of the budget stuff out, and start working on that kind of thing, so, okay, very good. From my perspective on announcements, portfolios, library board, we had a meeting.
Last week?
I don't know, things are kind of just blurring together, but some reading program numbers were, they were very happy with, I can't remember the exact number, but it sounded like they had a very good turnout for that so far. They're doing a lot of neat stuff over there. Movie Monday, they had a bunch of kids over there on, yesterday for movies, we had on Facebook, so they have all kinds of good stuff going on. We finalized budget over there for the one that will be presented to the commissions in July. If I remember correctly, it's very similar to last year's. I think there's just a slight increase in, in wages, you know, just to try to keep steady. And I think we put a little bit more, if I remember correctly, into the tech budget, just because of the usage of the online services that the library provides has been very heavily used, so they put a little bit more in the tech budget or somewhere in that vicinity, but it's very similar to what we saw before, so shouldn't be too many surprises there. Social services, last month, what we met, nothing too crazy coming out of that meeting, other than if anybody saw in the paper, probably Sunday-ish, I think it was. The emergency foster care services that are being rendered in the state are very difficult right now, in terms of there's no place to put kids, there's not enough foster care services when they have to do an emergency placement. Kids are staying in courthouses, are staying in all kinds of places because there's no place to place these emergency foster care kids, cause we just don't have enough foster care households, and especially ones that are willing to do that emergency care for maybe kids that are more difficult. We've seen that from our social services district, are running emergency foster care kids, not even halfway, fully across the state at times, to find places to place them. And then, though, that child unfortunately has, you know, mental, not that child specifically, but I'm saying as a general, will blow out of that facility, or blow out of that foster care house. And you gotta go pick them up on a Sunday afternoon within, like that, and it's been, it's been a goal for the, for the child protection staff. So hopefully the state will come up with some, some more ideas, try to, and it's, it's not, it's, you know, ongoing recruitment for foster care has been a continual thing, but we just have to have people that are willing to step up, plus we need placements for those children that maybe foster care is a perfect fit. You know, initially, so more to come on that, I guess, it's a continual thing, but we talked about it at our meeting too, it's, it's been a, it's been a constant discussion ongoing with child protection services and, and what's going on there. Meeting with the DOT, we had Kevin Frith from the township in at their last meeting. Right now, we're planning on June twenty-first, so that would be the same day as our next commission meeting, we're gonna do it, we're planning on two P M. I'm still reaching out to some of the individuals or the businesses along that stretch of highway, seeing if that time and date will work for them, but that works for the DOT, so that's what we're shooting for. Kevin's gonna be reaching out to a couple of different people out there too, that I didn't have contact numbers for, right now, we're looking at probably twelve to fourteen people in the meeting, we're gonna try to keep it you know, tight as we can, so that they can, that everyone that is along that stretch of highway has time to air their concerns, so that the DOT can understand where they're coming from. I think we'll probably notice it as a public meeting, just in case commissioners do wanna come and sit in on it and listen, so if we do have a forum, it's noticed. But if anybody wants to come, that's, they're welcome, but we're gonna, like I said, we're trying to keep it, so it's not some big two hundred people show up type of thing, cause we don't wanna overwhelm the DOT, and we want the ability for the stakeholders along that stretch of highway to have their time, to be able to impress upon them why they have concerns about the changes to the highway, so. That's the plan as of now, if anything changes, I'll, should I email to everyone? And I think we're gonna do it down in the historic room, that's the plan, so.
That's, you know, that's changing what they're using.
Yeah, so I, I tried purposely to put it in on that day, simply because then we, we're already in town, people can come in and, and hop in if they'd like to come sit in on it.
Having that, do you have a high line, you figure?
No, we're gonna do it right here in the courthouse, yeah, we'll do it in the courthouse, it's historic, we're down here, what the plan was.
Is your same?
Uh, and we're planning on two P M was my thought process right now, and that's what I told Kevin to talk, when he's talking to people, but like I said, I'm still reaching out to everyone, hopefully we can get everybody at that work site. It's one of those deals where, do you wanna do it during business hours or outside of business hours, but it's summer, so if you do it at seven o'clock, who wants to come to a seven o'clock meeting in end of June, when you could be out doing something? That's a lot of work, rather than sitting in a meeting, but hopefully twelve o'clock will work.
Sure would.
Yeah.
Now, you're gonna have the commission room?
No, downstairs, it's in the historic room, that's what our plan is, cause I need a little bit bigger meeting area, so. That's what our plan is now, and we'll see if we can get people on board.
You mean the same people that were at our meeting here, what?
I believe the same people from the DOT will be here, yes, Chad Orne, who was one of the ones from the DOT, has been my contact, he said the twenty-first to work just fine at any time, so once I get everybody on board locally, then I can fill him in on the time, plus two P M works well for the DOT people, because then they, they can make it back in time, they don't have to sit up here. They come, it's just a day of their, of their schedule, and so. Other than that, everything else in the courthouse has been going fairly well, I haven't heard anything bad, so it must be doing okay. From there, how was election going? Were we up, were we up to our ballots?
Um, as of five P M yesterday, we have mailed out one thousand nine hundred and eighty-three ballots, and we have gotten back one thousand three hundred and thirty-nine.
Wow, we mailed that many out?
Okay.
I think we have a slow day on election day.
And election day is June fourteenth, correct?
June fourteenth, the week from today.
Week from today, and when are the polls open?
Eight A M.
Eight A M until when?
Seven P M.
Seven P M, that way I can tell everyone, if you haven't voted yet, get out to the polls next Tuesday. When's the last time that those, uh, absentee's can come in?
They have to be cosmarked the day before election.
Cosmarked by June thirteenth.
Or dropped off in our office in the drop box by five P M.
That way I can make mention of it, so everybody knows, cause it's, inevitably, we always have people that don't get them in on time, and then they don't know if they should come in and vote. And all that stuff, so.
Yeah, we have ballots under the door of election day.
Yeah, and then, you hate to see that happen, because the people wanted to vote, and they did the right thing, but they forgot, and their ballot was sitting at their dead coffee table or whatever, and and their vote doesn't count, and they come to campus sometime, so.
And usually, usually what we do is if there are ballots that are slid under the door, because we're over in the memorial building, like we try to make contact with those people, and tell them that, you know, you dropped your ballot off on election day, unfortunately, you know, this won't count, so you will need to go to the memorial building and.
Yeah, come stop in and still vote, because it's still, you can still vote on the day of, even if you requested an absentee and it didn't come in on time, so. All right, fantastic. Anything announcements, anything else for the day in order?
One thing I may mention, the Pearson Arena, that Luke Oliver would put in there, had to dip in, and we're solely trying to fix that before all the events get started, so. Just so you're aware, it's gonna take a few passes with the motor grader, so.
Just sunk in from just fro, frost and freezing, all the fun stuff.
We have a rodeo going on out there this weekend.
So we're working on it this week.
And I think you were looking at setting up already yesterday, but they had a.
I see that.
An event going on yesterday.
Trying to decide that. Go time. Okay, very good. Anything else? Seeing nothing else, we are here.